You know, it's just something on there that's just in the background.
Yeah, I got you.
Greetings and salutations all. Welcome to the February 27th Board Meeting of the Akron Public Schools. Roll call please, Mr. Atkins.
Dr. Akbar.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Autry.
Present.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Mrs. McKittrick.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
I'm here.
And we have a student board member, Elliot Jackson.
Present.
Welcome, Mr. Jackson. Good to see ya. So, we're gonna ask you all to please stand for the pledge if you're able, but just before we do that, I want to say a little bit about the student who's gonna be leading us in our pledge. Where is our student leading us for the pledge? Okay, yes. His name is Mirways Dalwoodze. And he is an enthusiastic learner and is often the first one in the classroom each morning with a smile and a friendly greeting for his teacher. He is kind, respectful, and helpful to his teachers and classmates. Mirways has made incredible gains in his English language acquisition this school year and consistently amazes his teachers with his progress. He loves playing tag with his friends at recess, and his favorite Fun Friday activity is the Games, Puzzles, and Building Center. We are so thankful that Mirways is a part of our classroom community. He exemplifies the qualities of a Finley PACS leader: peaceful, prepared, and productive. Thank you for representing Finley and your classmates so well, Mirways. We are so proud of you. And now, I'm gonna ask if you'll all join me and stand up. And Mirways, we'd like you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance
I pledge allegiance
to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next, we're gonna proceed to our Eye Ready Student Recognition. Mr. Hatcher.
Good evening, everyone. I have the honor and privilege of recognizing some scholars who have so calmly rested out in the hallway so that they can be commended on their efforts over winter break. I'm gonna ask you guys that as we begin to welcome them into this room, that we can give them a wonderful, warm welcome as we would cheer on our graduates or as we would cheer on any additional celebration. So... As you guys know, a portion of every student's success is a wonderful combination between our scholars, their key supporter, their family who is also in the audience, as well as our educators who so graciously continue to allow these kids to reach their full potential. Our mission and vision follow suit with that. I want to talk to you guys a little bit as this group stands in front of you and talk about our Eye Ready Winter Challenge, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Carter. Thank you.
Sorry, I've had a few names, so sometimes they have to... But, so our scholars are being recognized for their progress in Eye Ready. Eye Ready is an assessment that we give at the beginning, mid-year, and end of the years. Though those are called our diagnostic assessments. And then it's also a tool that we use to monitor students' progress in order for teachers to individualize instruction for each student so that they're getting specifically what they need. And so, we're gonna start off by recognizing our scholars that we have here in the hallway. And in order for them to be recognized tonight, we challenged our scholars to stay connected to learning over the winter break. And so, the charge was for them to do at least 45 minutes per week and pass a minimum of two lessons per week. So it wasn't just about the amount of time they spent on Eye Ready, but we wanted to see them passing lessons. And we had over 4,000 scholars participate in both the Eye Ready Challenge and for math and for reading. Yes. And this is for math and for readings. And so, the 136 scholars who made it to the district's leaderboard are being recognized this evening. So we're so excited and proud to recognize our scholars. And our scholars that are in kindergarten through second grade will receive a Fire Seven Kids tablet with an adapter included. And then our scholars in third through eighth grade will receive a Kindle along with a power adapter. So that's just gonna increase their reading. Yes. And so, we're gonna start off by celebrating our scholars in the Firestone Cluster from KCLC. For reading, we have Nixon and Robert. For math, we have Jesse and Lena. From King CLC, we have Asani and Olivia. For reading, and then for math, we have Phoenix and Lillian. Portage Path CLC, we have Zachariah and Kaia for reading. For math, we have Braylee and Kayden for math. For Resnick CLC, Shakri, Shakri, Shakri and Shamar for reading. And Jahari and Princess Khalia, yeah, Khalia. Kahila, Kahila, excuse me. Princess Kahila for math. And then for Litchfield CLC, we have Genevieve for reading and Lael for math. Let's give all of our scholars a round of applause. All right, let's have Dr. Hall step over to take a picture with our scholars. Oh, okay. Can we have our cluster, who's our cluster representative for the Firestone Cluster? If you could join them too, please?
No, no, it's not. You're right, yeah.
Let's call over here.
We got paparazzi here. We got paparazzi. Oh my gosh. Just start smiling. Start smiling.
Oh, he's so nice. He did a great thing. He smiled because of that.
Okay, remember, I'm gonna do one, two, three, and the flash is gonna go off. Got a smile for me? All up your smile. Here we go. On three. One.
Say cheese.
Two, three. I'm gonna take two more now. Two more. On three. Okay, one. One, two. One, two, three. And one more, one more, one more. On three. One, two. What comes after two?
Three.
All right, there you go. Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, thank you so much. Let's give another round of applause for our Firestone Cluster students. Parents, you can go ahead and connect with your scholars and dismiss at this time if you choose.
Congratulations, guys. Congratulations, yes. Congratulations. Good work. Good job.
Congratulations, parents as well. Congratulations. Congratulations, a-let's. Congratulations.
We are now gonna recognize our Kenmore Garfield Scholars.
Yes, our champions.
Thank you, principals, that came from the Firestone Cluster. We appreciate you.
Is it one, two, three, and, or one, two, three? I think I was a movie writer.
I don't know. I get so confused after three. What comes after three? I forget. I didn't go to Akron Public Schools, so I should've. I should've.
All right, here come our scholars. Let's give our scholars a round of applause. We have our scholars from Firestone Park, Glover CLC, Mickey Bright CLC, Piper Elementary School, Reimer CLC, Sam Salem, Vora CLC, and Ennis CLC. Congratulations, scholars, on the job well done. We are so happy that you participated in this challenge, and we're looking forward to you continuing to read each and every day and continue the practice of passing at least two lessons a week. So keep it up. Let's have our cluster representative join our scholars for a photo. Ush. Okay, so our names here, we got Bryce, Jace for reading, Nyeri and Aiden for math, Rosalia and Aiden for reading, Leanna and Rylin for math, Zion, Zamar for reading, Dakota and Kendalyn for math, True and Serenity for reading, Savannah and Avea for math, Zane and Nikala for reading, Devin and Daryl for math, Grace Lynn and Daniel for reading, Connor and Jada for math, Ishan and Kylan for reading, and Nash and Jose for math. Oh, and Cameron for Ennis. I almost missed your name, Cameron. I'm so sorry. Cameron for math.
Again, we got paparazzi. Here we go. Smiles, okay? I'm gonna go one, two, three, and the flash, okay? And I'm gonna take three pictures, so each time, one, two, three, flash. Make sure I can see everybody. You gotta smile. You gotta smile. Young man in the back, come over that way just a little bit. Yeah, there you go, right there. Okay, smile. One, two, three. Hold on. Oh, that is so good. I'm gonna take two more. One, one, smile. One, two, three. And one more. On three. One. One, two, three.
Congratulations again. Parents, you may connect with your scholars and exit if you choose. Congratulations. Yeah, you go right there and greet the child. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations, parents. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And let's hear it for our North Cluster students. So from Finley CLC, we have Keela, Marwais, Supriya, and A. From Forest Hill CLC, we have Samuel, Prakriti, Suzwan, and Sahil. From Harris Jackson CLC, we have Tyrone, Pranita, Melissa, and Zaire. From Leggett CLC, we have Nande, In, Serena, and Gabrielle. And from Jennings CLC, we have Emida and Arzo. Let's hear it for this wonderful group. And if we can have our North Cluster... Oh, I see you in position. Thank you. Parents, if you want to get in position to take your picture, please do so at this time.
Hey, now look at me, okay? Three times. I'm gonna take count to three. Yeah, Valerie, you set. Okay, Derek, that's good, right there. On three. One.
Picture a smile.
Two, two and a half. Here we go, three. Let me make sure it's a good one. That is a good one. I'm gonna take two more, though. On three. One, two, three. I know, I feel the same way.
And let's get one more round of applause for these... Oh, one more.
One more. On three, on three. One, two, three, okay? One, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations.
Scholar champions, if you would at this time meet your scholar and escort them out at this time, and let's hear one more round of applause for these wonderful students.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I would assume he comes back and takes it, I hope.
Now you can go.
Did you see any keys? My keys fell out my pockets when I came in.
The last one?
At this time, we're going to recess for five minutes to give us time to break down the ladder and allow folks who would like to leave to do that, and then we will resume in five minutes. We are in recess. It is now 6:03, and we will resume. We are back in session. Next, we will proceed to item 1.4 here, and that is Community and School Reflections. Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, Dr. Hall. So I had the distinct pleasure of going to the Middle School Jazz Festival this past Friday. And for those of you who may not know, my seventh grader, Litchfield, plays in the jazz band there. And I had the honor and privilege of being there and seeing him and his friends onstage. He had a solo for the event. And I gotta just say to the director, Andrew Shifano, great job, great work with the students. Also, there was Jennings, Ennis Hire, and Miller South. They all put on a great performance. Carla was there as well, and she got a chance to speak at the event. I just want to say, I know that it takes a lot of work to get as good as they are, and they practice before school, from what I understand. So I commend them for the great work they do, and thank you very much for allowing me to be at that program.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Other Community and School Reflections. Ms. Jackson.
Yes, since the last time that we met, as Joe stated, I was able to attend the Jazz Festival for the middle school jazz bands within our district. And it was a wonderful experience, and I just want to thank all those who participated. It was a great turnout of parents, all the music teachers, the directors, as well as, I think, is it Ms. Wilson? Ms. Wilson is doing a fantastic job with the programming, with our music programming. And she also spoke of some grant, a grant that we received for, to keep music in the classrooms, and how each class, more classrooms, they're trying to build into where each classroom can have a certain music device, like a boom. I don't know the technical term, so y'all musical people don't get me, but I just thought that was really good for the creatives. And, but I think what was most impressive for me was to see the passion of the kids when they're playing Miles Davis and Nina Simone. And you see, it's like the kids, they get to moving and tapping their feet with the music, and you see how important the arts are into an educational process. And so I just really want to say it's important to support the arts in any way that we can, because you can see the sparks in those kids' eyes, and they did a really, really good, good, good job. And so all of the, for all of the schools, I want to say, great job to the parents. Great job, because as Ms. Wilson said, it takes discipline. And I even want to say intestinal fortitude, not just for the learner, but for the parent, to be consistent and to consistently make sure that your child is practicing and doing what they need to do. So again, it was a pleasure to witness that, and it was a pleasure to be in wonderful Garfield High School. My alma mater, the building looks great. And also, I was able to visit Butoh High School. And as you know, I'm the liaison for the Butoh Cluster this year, so I visit Butoh often. And when I came back this, this trip, I was coming specifically to see this young man. I believe his name is Jason, but he has a brand, Bailey Brand. And so I told him, you know, I'm gonna come back and I want to buy a jogging suit from you, because I saw, I went there one day, you know, he had on his jogging suit. I went to see Dr. Lisa Sims and meet with some scholars that were part of the Honor Society and just get an understanding of the culture and the climate of the building and how the students felt. And I bumped into him in the hallway, and he was putting up signs, like it was handmade signs, and it was Bailey, Bailey Monday, right? And so he was basically doing his own self-promotion and advertisement for his students to purchase his brand. And so I looked at his brand. For some of you know, I am heavily into youth entrepreneurship. And I said, well, this is good. I would like to like meet with you and talk to you a little bit more about this and tell you about some opportunities in the community where you possibly could be a vendor. And the NAACP had a wonderful vendors' fair where they invited young people. Unfortunately, he, he missed that event, but we have another event that's coming up in the community that's helped by a young entrepreneur called Sneak Geeks, and I want to see him there. Anyway, I was able to buy a sweat suit from him, and it was $80. And it was worth the $80. You see how y'all all did that? We go to Saks, we don't do all that, right? You go get your hair done, you know, we have to support our community, and we have to support our young people in the community. And a lot of people know Akron Public Schools, we have four Es: employ, enroll, enlist, and entrepreneurship. So we need to put value in every area for our young people so that they find significance in whatever it is they may do. They're creatives. We have students doing hair, making shirts, doing nails. And we need to show them how to leverage that in a positive way and to give back to our community. So I definitely wanted to give him a shout out, and he sold out that day. So it wasn't just Ms. Jackson coming by. His, his peers were wearing his brand and are buying his brand. So let's get on the team before he world-famous, and y'all want to put him on all your literature. That he was from APS. So support the Bailey Brand. He's at Butoh High School. So that's my reflection. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Appreciate you. Dr. Akbar.
Thank you. I don't know if I could top that.
You can't, you can't, you can't.
So. I, I had the, the great opportunity to do science and robotics the last two weeks. And now, these, these last two weeks, I was able to go into the arts and then also talk to our talented young black men in our schools. And so I was able to go to the Choir in the Rounds, which was fantastic. It was held at Firestone in the auditorium, and all of the choirs were good, like all of them. And I, if you want to see a few of them, I did take some snippets and post it on my Instagram if you want to see. But one of the songs was just phenomenal. I can't even. They did a different rendition of "This Little Light of Mine" that was out of this world. So I, I was so enamored, I didn't even do a video of that one. So I'm sorry, I don't have a video of that one, but it was really phenomenal. So I want to say kudos to Mrs. Dawn Wilson for a great event, and I was really excited to be there. Also, I was able to attend the Ward Eight meeting and talk about the, the updates that we had at the, the district. And then, most recently, this week, I was able to go to the APS Path to High School Success that was held at John S. Knight Center, and I know Mr. Alexander was there as well. But I was able to talk, oh, and Mr. Jackson. I was able to talk to multiple different students about their experiences here and talk about what it means to be Akron Public Schools Board Member, which was really powerful. They, through those conversations, they left me with quite a bit of notes that I took on my phone. So I'll give you the three highlights of what the young men shared with me. One, they, they said that they believe that, one, they want to, they begged to keep their cell phones. And they believed that the 90 minutes in class contributed to cellphone use because we have to make classes more interesting. And so they asked us to, whoever it is who's in charge, reconsider block scheduling. And then also, they wanted school lunches to be more nutritious, and they don't want just junk, but more sandwiches and things that are tasty and not, I'm not going to tell you what they said, but just not what they currently eat. So with that being said, those were the, the highlights of that event. But it was phenomenal to get a chance to talk to those young men. And the last thing I'll say is, most of them had like good questions, not just about being a board member, but they just asked you questions about, you know, how do I, you know, continue to be successful? And, and I had one young man who's graduating. He almost held me hostage. He was talking to me for about 15, 20 minutes about all of his plans after graduation. And he's graduating this year, and so I want to say a shout out to that young man who went to North High School. I'm, I'm positive he has a bright future, and as, as do the rest of our students. So I just wanted to say, I was lifted up after that event, and so I'm, I'm proud to be here, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Akbar. Are there other Community and School Reflections? Mr. Alexander.
Yes, I'm gonna start with something that's kind of boring, but I'm gonna end up with the kids, because that's what it's all about to me. I went to OSB, OSBA trustee meeting this past Saturday, and during the meeting, there was a lot of good information. There were new board members who were part of the trustee organization, and there was a lot of legislative update. There's going to be some good legislative updates. You may have gotten some today, and you'll be getting more, because we need to push this legislation, because it's pushing against public schools, and we need to make sure it stays for all our kids. I mean, we want to make sure all the kids get what they're supposed to get and what they need so they can be successful in our, in our communities. They had a nice social media presentation by a gentleman from Hens Communications. Talked about social media and being careful what you put on social media, because you're, some things, once they're out there, they're out there, and it could be hijacked, and things can, can get bad. So talk to all of us as, as board members about being careful with our social media. And then they had updates on their, their vision, mission, and some strategy of the organization, which is really good. I think it's gonna be good. They're changing some things. They're trying to be more proactive, and they want to make sure they include all kids in all, all school districts, which I thought was good as well. And again, they talked about protecting, you know, public education. That's what they do. That's their work, and that's what they were talking about. It was a long meeting. It was five hours, and, but we meet quarterly, so that's not too bad. But the five hours and sitting there and listening and interacting was, is a long time. Now, the good stuff. I also had opportunity to attend ELLIT-CLC, the Jazz Program. As, as echoed, Mrs. Wilson has done a good job. It always does a good job, but I love those kids. You listen to those kids. I went to, just to introduce and welcome, and I said I'm gonna be there for about 15 minutes, and that 15 minutes turned to 20 and 25. And I had to call, say, hey, we're supposed to be somewhere. Hey, I'm gonna be late. I stayed the whole program, and the kids were doing such a good job. It was fun. And at the end, it was really nice. They took kids from all the high schools and needed a jam session. And so I was like ready to put my dancing shoes on and all this good stuff and get out, because it was, it was good, and these kids are really good. So the, the, the program is really good, and Mrs. Wilson is done, doing a good job there. And I also have to say that other students from all the schools and staff, they did a really good job. And Mr. Graham, who, who does a lot there at ELLIT for, for the, the school and the Jazz, so that was good. And then also, Pathways to Success was very good, as Dr. Akbar stated. They had an acronym called dopeness, and I was like, what is dopeness, and what did that mean? And what it means is, is they're distracting the obstacles that they, that they may persistently face every day. So they want to face those obstacles, meet those obstacles, and get over those obstacles. And I thought that was really good. The kids were very excited, very engaging. They, they asked a lot of questions, as Dr. Akbar said. There was a kid who they caught me hostage as well. And they also had sheets, because they want to interact with you. They had forms that they had, and they had to talk to certain people, talk to this type of entrepreneur, this type of entrepreneur, this person. And they had some good conversation. These kids were doing a really good job. And these, these were all young men, and these young men were on very, very, very good behavior. They were business, and they were, they were doing good, and I was very, very proud to see these young men participate. And I also got a chance to sit with, they said they had what they call a dignitary table, and I told them I'm not a dignitary, so I didn't want to sit at that table. But I wanted to sit with the kids, so I got a chance. I was looking around for a seat, and it happened to be, I'm standing right there by the cluster that I'm representing was ELLIT, so I sat down with the kids there. And the, the campus support leader, Allison Brightenthal, she was there with the kids. We had good discussion, good conversation with her, but I also had good conversation with the kids. I, I love to interact with the kids. I love what they're doing, and they're the reason why we're really here today. If it wasn't for the kids, we wouldn't be here. None of us would be here right now. So we have to make sure we stay focused on the kids. But these kids, there were three kids at the table I sat with, Tayshawn Ruffin, Jaden Gannely, and Tierra Blocker. And these young men were very, very well-respected. They had good manners at the table. I was just blown away, and that, that made my, the rest of my week just outstanding. It went into my weekend. So I want to thank everybody for, for that, and Allison Strickland and her team for the great job that they did and for the second year putting that on. So I think next year, we, we'll have it again, more of us attend and get a chance to see what some of these young men that we don't hear about are doing really good, because we hear about all the bad things, and we don't hear about the good things. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Alexander. Are there other? Yes, Ms. Autry.
Thank you, Mr. President. And so, just to echo my colleagues, I also had the opportunity to attend some of our winter concert series. I went to the high school bands in the round at East, the middle school choirs in the round at Garfield. And again, our fine art specialist, Dawn Wilson, should be commended for such a great job. This was the first in-person performance for most of these groups since COVID, so. And Ms. Jackson alluded to the grant, the Save the Music Foundation, thanking them for supplying instruments to our elementary students. And also, the Marilyn Stroud Music Alive Program, they refurbish instruments for our students at no cost to us. So anyone out there listening or in the audience who has an old saxophone or flute sitting around somewhere, please donate that to us so that our students can benefit. And then, coming up on Tuesday, May 16th, is the May Festival of the Arts, for anyone who's interested. That's gonna be at the Goodyear Theater. Also, since we last met, it was my pleasure to meet with a few of our student school board members, Abigail, DeEssence, and Frozen. And they also had a lot to share about our cellphone discussion. They lent a lot to the conversation, echoing what Dr. Akbar said. They did mention, you know, the 90-minute block, something we should maybe reconsider. They also shared that they wanted the opportunity to be able to demonstrate responsible technology use as we are in 2023, and they just wanted that opportunity. And so they shared a lot. I expect to be hearing more from them. I think we all got an email from the school newspaper at ELLIT. They have a lot of questions for us. And so I, I just love hearing the student voice, so that was a really great opportunity to meet with those young people. And then lastly, I always have to mention my sports because it's important. Whatever gets our school, our students in seats at school and keeping a GPA, I'm all for it. And so I just wanted to say a special congratulations to our ELLIT Girls Basketball Team. I think they just finished a really, really great run, and their coach, Nick Harris, who was the Division One Tri-County Coach of the Year. And so congratulations to him and the team over there. And then also, proud to, of our East CLC Boys Basketball and Butoh CLC Boys Basketball, who are in the tournament. I think they've made it out the sectionals, and so now they're moving on to districts next. So congratulations and good luck to them. APS proud. That's it.
Thanks, Ms. Autry. Are there any other additional Community and School Reflections? Okay, so first, let me apologize, because, so normally during this section of our meeting, we begin with the student school board members. So, Mr. Jackson, my, my apologies to you, sir. Would you please take the mic, and we'd love to hear your update?
All right. Hi, I am Elliot Jackson. I'm currently a junior attending Garfield CLC. I'm a student basketball player and football player. This is currently my second year serving as a student board member. As a student board member, I hear a lot about the cellphone policy from the administration. I feel students my age and even younger middle school students, for us, technology is life. It would be better for students if teachers used technologies in a classroom as part of their lessons. For example, teachers could give an assignment using phones, like who can make the best educational TikTok, since everybody's on TikTok nowadays? Or who can make the best educates, educational song for an Instagram reel, since everybody on Instagram nowadays? I feel that taking phones away from everybody is unfair, because it's a handful of students who are rebellious and use phones in the wrong ways, and not everybody. As a black young man, because of my skin color, I often feel like I'm automatically seen as someone that's doing the wrong thing, and it's irritating. And it makes me feel like I'm being prosecuted for something I didn't do. And I feel like a lot of students feel this way, if they, will feel this way if the cellphone policy is being enforced. Taking cell phones away won't stop fights, in my opinion. And students may, may be more rebellious and not want to give up their phones. If school was more exciting and classes were interesting to the students, cell phones would not be a problem, in my opinion. For there to be less fights, I feel like students need peer mediators. I know there is a peer mediation training happening soon. Peer mediators should be all over the school and not just sitting in a room when a fight happens. Like, peer mediators should be like in the hallways to stop a fight, or if they see something happening, or if they hear something about a fight, go to the administration. And I feel like there should be people who relate, like, and used to be getting them type of problems or had recent anger problems and getting in fights a lot. But back to the cellphone policy. If it is enforced, it should be like, I feel like it should be in middle school, because that's where students' behaviors are at its boiling point, and that leads to high school. Then those like go to high school, and it begins to become worse. If the policy is enforced at any grade, school become more like a prison and not a place to learn. Also, I feel like students is going to act more rebellious, and that's going to cause more students to leave or go online, because you're taking our life away. The student board is open to continue in talking with leaders to make school better. And lastly, don't forget, we are all Akron Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. I definitely appreciate that perspective. I just wanted to add just a couple of quick comments before, before we move on to request to address the board. Just really piggybacking off of something Ms. Autry said. You know, with regard to the cellphone policy, again, we did sit down and talk with some of the regard to the cellphone policy. Again, we did sit down and talk with some of the student school board members. And, and Ms. Autry mentioned Abigail Kearns from L. I feel like, you know, I, we, we've got to give her an extra special call out because this young woman put together a survey and a questionnaire for students at L. I think last time we checked, I think she had over 100 responses to her survey. She wants to keep it even, open even longer to try to get more responses. You know, she has a really, she has a lot of questions and a lot to say. And one of the things that we, that we talked about was creating a venue for her, possibly here at this board meeting, to come and sort of present the results of the work that she's done. Because she has done a lot of work. And I think that when students go above and beyond that way, that, that we have to find a way to reward that and make sure that they get the appropriate attention and exposure and recognition that they deserve for doing that kind of work. And so, so again, I don't know if Abigail's watching tonight, but if you are, Abigail, we are going to create time for you so that way we can hear really the fruits of all your labor. Did also hear about block scheduling. It's, it's something that we've heard from a number of students that that's not very popular. Haven't, I've yet to talk to a student who likes it yet, to be quite frank. So perhaps that's something else that we should talk about at, at some point. And then I also want to recognize Ms. Whitfield, that, that, that leads the student school board. She's their mentor, you know, their teacher. You know, you know, we've, I, I always knew Ms. Whitfield, you know, going back, going back three years now. But it's especially in this most recent transition of taking over as board president. And myself and Ms. Autry have had a chance to really spend a lot more time with you. And so certainly appreciate all the work you're doing and all the advice you're giving the board around how we can improve the student school member experience. And so please know that, that, that we, it is rolling right in our head and we, I think, I think to use your words, we are definitely going to continue to lean in, to, to expand and, and create an enhanced experience for these, for these wonderful student, students of ours. And then I got to close, when Mr. Alexander referenced the, the term here, was it dope? What was it dope?
Dopeness.
Dopeness, yeah. Yeah, I heard a new phrase, too, when we talked with the students. It was, uh, life be lifein'. And I didn't, I didn't know what that meant.
What was that again?
Life be lifein'. Mr. Jackson, can you tell us what life be lifein' means?
I don't know.
You don't know what that means?
Okay.
So, so that's a new phrase we learned, you know, the other day. And so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add that to my, my, my growing vocabulary of terms. You'll probably hear it in a graduation speech here in the spring. I'll, I'll, I'll work life be lifein' in there. So, anyway, so that's, so, so that's all I've got today from a community school reflection standpoint. We're going to move next to a request to address the board. And like we do at all board meetings, I'll just read the preamble. There, I believe there are eight folks who are here to address the board tonight. So I'm not going to read the same preamble eight times. So I'll just read it. I'll just ask, ask you all to pay attention. I'll, I'll read it one time. But request to address the board. So, participants will not be permitted to speak on matters related to vendors and business matters, formal complaints, grievances, specific students or student records, personnel matters, and potential or pending legal matters. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. The board will not respond, but will, but will assign through the superintendent the appropriate person for follow-up. Having said that, we'll next proceed to our request to address the board. First, I've got Suzie Graham. Is this Downtown Akron Partnership, Suzie Graham?
It is.
It is. Great. Great to see you again.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much. So on January 28th, an estimated crowd of 2,200 people celebrated Lunar New Year at the Akron Civic Theater. 20 minutes before the start of the program, we had to start turning people away. We were just too full. The need for and love for culture and community was palpable. It was the most diverse, full-capacity audience in the history of the Akron Civic Theater. Fifteen organizations collaborated to bring the celebration to life. In a time of tension, it was a triumph for Akron. At the center of that triumph is the National Inventors Hall of Fame STEM School. NIFSTEM, through its unique location, curriculum, and partnerships, provides a quality of experiential learning with its learners and families unlike any other in the city. Not unlike an integral to the downtown in which it sits, NIFSTEM represents the intersection and integration of all of Akron's neighborhoods, serving children from all of our clusters, in a place where arts, culture, economy, and community are augmented and reflected as the identity of our city. NIFSTEM relies on place-based partnerships forged over time to provide an excellent education for its students, inspiring the next generation of desperately needed engineers and STEM professionals to embrace their opportunity in the future of Akron. These partnerships play out daily to include numerous walking field trips to the corporate and entrepreneurial community, critical two-way learning with University of Akron, problem-based learning projects with Downtown Akron Partnership and other nonprofits, and one-of-a-kind opportunities like taking the stage during Lunar New Year this year. These partnerships, though inspirational and certainly possible to learn from, are not replicable or transferable. Co-location of the STEM High School can scale the NIFSTEM experience to more students, but these experiences cannot be interchanged. The location of both schools downtown would allow for the deepening of the much-needed in-school fostering of STEM career paths that can provide students-aligned curriculum and experiences for in-demand, high-paying jobs within Akron's workforce. Mr. President, I know that your close connection to Kenmore Neighborhood Alliance and your presence on their board, I'm sure makes this a subject of great passion. I don't envy the web of potential conflicts of interest that you must navigate as part of ensuring this process is conducted publicly and transparently and with ample opportunity for public information, consideration, and feedback, but I really look forward to it. The challenges APS has before it are many, as are its strengths. On paper, what from a distance may seem to pen out as a penny-wise transaction may ultimately be a pound-foolish decision that short-changes not only deep and foundational community partnerships, but the strength of the school district itself, and most importantly, the children whose education, experience, and well-being should be prioritized as the essential future of our city. Congratulations on the outcomes of your leadership that comes to fruition every day at 199 South Broadway. Work that has been in the making and because of its unique location downtown since 2009, that has set a precedent, tone, and trajectory for the district that continues to catalyze growth and change for the better. I thank you again for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Judy Hill, president of the Akron NAACP.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know, I'm Judy Hill, the president of the Akron NAACP. And thank you to the board and to Superintendent Mary Outley Kelly for this opportunity. First, I want to, for those of you that don't know, I have 32 years of experience working and living and breathing in the Akron Public Schools. This evening, I want to share my perspective, my perspective on the superintendent issue. We in the Akron NAACP were under the impression that relationships between the board and the superintendent was improving. On Thursday, January 19th, the superintendent Fowler Mack presented the district equity plan to the Akron NAACP membership. She energized the body and gave us our marching orders. She told us to be visible, be more engaged, and get in there and do more to help our scholars. She spoke deliberately about what the district team is doing to move the needle for all children. Superintendent Fowler Mack spoke about the strategic focus on collaboration with the community to help ensure student success. The membership was excited and began a process of prioritizing our action items. Her comments were just supported in the Beacon Journal over the weekend. And I quote, "Work with nonprofits such as G A R, United Way, Stan Uit has continued uninterrupted in a positive and productive direction. The college and career academies continue to expand and add new businesses and community partners." So you can understand my concern and our frustration when we heard at our next meeting that she and the district had parted ways. Her focus on student success and educational excellence and equity was overshadowed, I believe, by personal issues. So I believe, and I truly believe that all of you want to make a difference for all the scholars in our district. Many of you ran on a platform of change and a desire to elevate Akron schools. Change against inequities and change against the status quo. You had a unique opportunity to actually do this with a fresh leadership, and somehow we missed the mark. Within three months of her contract, all we saw at the board meetings and read in the paper was your dissatisfaction. For 19 months, she was not given the leadership opportunity to be successful to develop her team and to move an agenda forward. It appeared that every step she tried to take as an academic leader was met with opposition. I would have felt more powered, empowered, and strengthened had this opposition been against violent behavior, against truancy, against inequity, against bullying, against students leaving our district. But clearly, it appeared to be a war against the superintendent. Now let's not forget, this is a person that you hired. As a board, her success is your success. Her failures are your, are your failures. To me, this is not a time to celebrate, folks. We don't want to celebrate failure. We have to start looking at opportunities. And that's why I'm here today. I'm hoping that in the future, you look introspectively to figure out how to recruit and retain a permanent superintendent for the future of Akron Public Schools. I hope you will learn from this situation so the district isn't here again in 19 months. We got to look at leadership styles, our board management, how our decisions impact the budget, the morale, the students, and the community. In the Beacon Journal article, there was also, also mentioned, "We deserve leaders who put their egos, ambitions, and personal agendas aside to do what is best for kids." I wholeheartedly agree with that. I will also want you to know, I know that some of you won't continue on your role here on the board, and you see this as an opportunity to run for other offices. Our students are not political pawns, folks. They deserve the commitment and focus of dedicated leaders. And so in closing, I want to say in the future, Ms. Outley, you know how I feel about you and your leadership. I've worked with you for many years. You work well with APS staff, students, and community. That's been evident. I want you to know that we will continue to work and support, that we will continue and listen more intently to the interactions that go on here so that we can support your work and your success. And I thank you guys for the opportunity to hear me out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we will move to Ward Four Councilperson, Russ Neal.
Good evening. I come to you in the spirit of ojima. And if any of you know about Ward Four, ojima is about collective work and responsibility. It's the third principle of the Iguzo Saba, which we celebrate during Kwanzaa. But in the community, we understand that principle is 24/7/365. And the reason why I say I come to you in the spirit of ojima is because with collective work and responsibility, we are all in this together. We all succeed or we all fail. I know this is an emotional issue. It's sensitive for a lot of us because we know everyone involved in this. But I'm here just to say this. As a community, if anyone feels that the board failed, as a community, we all failed. If anybody feels that the board succeeded and the superintendent succeeded, then we all succeeded. We all fail or we all succeed together. Period. And so, you know, going forward, first let me ask, I want to extend my apologies for folks that serve in the board that I serve on, even interfering in your business. Because as you can see, we can't handle ours. We've got a lot of issues in the city that we've got to handle. So I want to extend that apology. But I also want to say this, that again, in the spirit of ojima, that I supported everyone in the past. Because as I said, a year or so ago, you all were elected as school board representatives. Someone wants to be on the school board, they should run. If someone wants to be on city council, they should run. But once the, the elections are over, we're all in this together because you're, you're a representative, I'm a representative. So I just want to say, I know this is, has been an emotional time. We've got a lot of work to do. No matter what side of the fence you're on, we're all in this together, folks. One city, and we move forward. So I'm just here to pledge my support to this board, to the interim superintendent, to the teachers and staff. If we come to a point, and to the community leaders, if we come to a point where we don't agree or we disagree, that's part of the process. Understand, struggle is part of the process. I'm not a woman. I've never had a child, but I hurt is painful. Okay? But at the end of that process, a beautiful thing is born, a baby. So let's understand, when we come to the part where we have pains, it's part of the process. And let's just communicate with each other, support each other. And when we have our, our differences, take time to reason. But I'm just here to say, I'm here to support you. I'm here to support this community, like many of you are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sophia Von Brant, Van Brant? Am I saying that right? Sophia Von Brant? Okay. All right. Next, I have Janine Glockner. Is there a Janine Glockner in the audience? Next, we have Pastor Harrison.
Good evening, board, senior staff, and teachers. I want to bring to our attention a couple of things. It is disturbing that 19 months after the superintendent is hired, we are now looking for another superintendent. But I want us to remember the first shot that was shot. The first letter that was written against this board was not during the time that Superintendent Fowler Mack was here. It was when David James was here. The second letter came, and I want to make that distinction because this board is an elected body. It's elected by the citizens of Akron. We elected the board for change. And to ask a question or to expect accountability is not something that we should look down on. I, I was amazed to find out that African-Americans are suspended five to one. But it's not really that amazing when you look at African-Americans in the community dying eight to one, being incarcerated seven to one. And I think some of these people who are putting some of this information out, they have other business. The mayor needs to take care of the city. Because if you are not safe in the community, if grandma's not safe in the community, how is, schools are safe? If the kids are not appropriate in the community, they're not appropriate in school. So I think some of these numbers, you know, will take us off guard. Safety in the schools cannot happen until we have safety in the community. The Elevate Akron Report, African-American businesses have been excluded from opportunities in the city. So the chamber needs to take care of that. That, that would be a good start. United Way, we didn't make it on those bold goals. Our kids are still not prepared to come to school. And so I think there's a place for business. But when business positions itself ahead of our students, when business forced their way into a interview process that they did not, we did not elect the mayor to be in an interview process with the superintendent. We elected the board. And so you created a situation that was hostile. I talked to Superintendent Fowler Mack, and I explained to her, she came into a hostile situation. But it was not hostile, the board, against her. To the board, I support you. We support you. I live in Akron. I'm a product of Akron Public Schools. A lot of the people who are talking don't even live in Akron. School is not a business. We need to educate our children. We need to talk about safety. Let's talk about safety in the community. And everyone does their position. Play your part. Let's be safe in the community. Let's be safe in law enforcement. And then we'll have safe schools. I commend the teachers. I support the teachers. Maybe it's not a bad thing. I did hear a dog whistle in the article. Maybe they won't support the levy. That's what I heard. I heard a dog whistle, business saying, we may not support the levy. Well, if you say that, and if you feel that way, you really don't care about our kids. And maybe taking that money out of that process is not a bad thing. But if you support our kids, then you do what's right, and you stand behind the board, you support the board. And does the board do everything right? No. No. But we celebrated a white young man who was 20 years old when he came to this board. We celebrated that. We celebrated his desire to help. Let's not pretend anything other than this is about Dr. NJ Akbar, and this is about Dr. Hall. Let's throw it out there and put it where it is. This is what that's about. If we want to know what institutional racism looks like, it's not individuals being racist, but it is an institution that does not want to change. I salute you, I applaud you, and we will get through this together. The levy should not be on the table, but change should be on the table. Thank you.
Next, we have Michael Harkness.
Yes, it's me again. It's hard to follow that. That was great. Thank you. Hello, my name is Michael Harkness, and I've been with Akron Public Schools as a teacher for 12 years now, currently teaching at Glover CLC, but I'm also a product of this fine district. I'm a 1997 graduate of Central Howard High. What I will tell you is, today I'm standing here in support of the Akron Public School Board. I am here because your willingness to collaborate with the students, the staff, and the community of Akron needs to be applauded. Through my observations, since the beginning of this year, I believe that progress has been made, and I feel like we all have a space at the table and are a part of that conversation. In the recent past, I feel politicians and people with their own agenda have tried to spread a narrative that is just completely untrue. This current school board and their members have worked to pick up the pieces of years that were truly like something we have never seen before and hopefully will never see again. And I would like to thank them for their tireless work and their willingness to help guide this district in a right direction. For the first time in my life, I feel like my voice and the voices of my peers are actually being heard. I understand that we may not always agree, but at least my perspective is being heard and taken into consideration. Those people with personal political agendas are using the press and soundbites to push a false viewpoint that is not based on what's happening on the ground in our schools. They do not consider what the people that are here every day are doing. And believe it or not, from my perspective, I don't think they really care. They are here to push their own agenda and move themselves forward, not our kids. What I really want to say is that this board needs to stay the course and continue their efforts with collaboration with all parties involved in helping this district improve. The good work we have done is nowhere near finished. Helen Keller once said, "Alone, we can do so little; together, we can do so much." The only way that we make true progress is to work together. To all those that want to criticize, I really want you to understand that you can choose to help us work through solutions, or you can continue to be part of the problem. Thank you, Board, and please know that your work does not go unnoticed and unappreciated.
Next, we have Dawn Blakeney.
And I've been here before, too. Good evening, my name is Dawn Blakeney. I'm a first-grade teacher at Forest Hill CLC. I've taught for Akron Public Schools for over 25 years. I'm here to voice my full support for the members of the Akron Public School Board. I'm also here to tell you that for the last few years, the district's administration appears to me to have spread a culture of paralysis, confusion, and dysfunction. I saw a lack of implementing common sense decisions. Collaboration with stakeholders, as well as the execution of a cohesive vision for our scholars' future, simply did not exist. Clear communication with parents, staff, and students was sporadic and hollow at best. Violence in schools at every level climbed to an all-time high. Administrative leadership's refusal to work with bargaining units to find sustainable and simple solutions to these ongoing problems were continually discarded. Recently, there's been a lot of written, and there's been a lot said and written, many opinions stated publicly from members of the business and political community about the current school board, which offer no solutions but a lot of finger-pointing. Have these critics got their own houses in order before they criticized the school board who are elected representatives of the citizens of Akron? Do they reach out to our school board to discuss challenges in a productive manner? They continue their negativity in a heavy-handed way without any benefit of fact surrounding the work that this board continues to advance in order to seek solutions to our students and educators' most challenging issues. Speaking for myself, I am a teacher who has been seen and heard by this school board. This school board's willingness to authentically collaborate with students, teachers, staff, and parents are a first. My students have been directly impacted and positively affected by this school board. I have seen members of this board in my building and in my classroom. This board has been open to meeting and talking to me. I will say that I do not always agree with you, but I appreciate your professional approach, your questioning, your discourse, the way you engage with those stakeholders both within APS and the community at large. I appreciate your efforts and professional insights. You interceded and collaboratively avoided a strike. I appreciate your quick action to find and appoint an interim superintendent to help move this district forward in a positive direction. Thank you for doing your due diligence to research, debate, and thoughtfully consider the impact of all your decisions on the entire Akron community. In the end, I think it is best to remember that our last district leader came to a mutual decision with the board to leave the district. I believe that she made a decision that was in the best interest of all involved. In short, this school board is more than capable and has proven that they are working collaboratively to find ways to move our district and community forward. Let's all move on with them to serve children, families, and the Akron community, rather than continuing to muddy the waters with political drama that serves no one's best interest. Thank you.
Thank you, and I believe that is the, those are all of the requests to address the board. I think that the two folks I called off were probably signing up to come here for the I-Ready Awards, is what I'm thinking happened there. So next, we are going to proceed to Item Four, which is approval of the previous meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 13?
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Akbar. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Ms. McKittrick. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we move to personnel recommendations, Items Five through Sixteen. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, President Hall. I wish to recommend approval of the personnel recommendations presented in Categories Five through Sixteen.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Autry. Any discussion?
I do have one thing.
Sure, Mr. Perry.
Item 10.3 specifically goes over Elizabeth Meeks, who's a secretary at Resnick Community Learning Center, apparently getting a promotion. I want to congratulate her on that promotion. Beth has been with that, with Resnick now for about three and a half years. I know her very well from my son, who's currently at Resnick in the fourth grade. And so, congratulations, Beth Meeks, you've done a great job. Look forward to seeing you in the future.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Perry. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Atkins.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
No on 11.3, yes on the rest.
Motion carries. Next, we'll move to Items Eighteen through Twenty-One. This is approval of resolutions and motions in the consent agenda. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, President Hall. I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in Category Twenty-One. They are in proper format, and I move their approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Akbar. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. McKittrick. Is there any discussion? Dr. Akbar?
We might be saying the same thing. I just want to really acknowledge the wonderful individuals who have given to Akron Public Schools. I specifically want to point out the individuals who gave to Project Rise, specifically those who were supporting laundry time and allowing families to clean their clothes and be able to walk in the world with dignity and pride. I just want to say that we shouldn't underestimate the benefit that that provides. So I wanted to say thank you to everyone who provided those donations.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar. Ms. Autry?
Yes, thank you, and you're correct. I actually wanted to thank those donors as well, including the Schwab Charitable Grant Award to Project Rise in the amount of $200,000 to help support our students and families experiencing homelessness. So thank you so much for that.
Any additional discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Atkins.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Autry?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Moving right along then, we'll next proceed to Item Twenty-three, Business Affairs Recommendations. Madam Superintendent.
I wish to recommend approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in Category Twenty-three.
Is there a motion to approve the Business Affairs Recommendations?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. McKittrick. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Autry. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Atkins.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. McKittrick?
No on 23.1, 23.4, 23.21, yes on the rest.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Next, we'll move to Item Twenty-five, which is superintendent's report. Ms. Ottley.
Thank you. As part of the superintendent's report this evening, we have Trisha Kelly, who is teacher, expanded learning, and Marcy Ebright, our Director of College and Career Academies of Akron. They're with us this evening to share some exciting news around our essential learning experiences.
Good evening, Superintendent Ottley, President Hall, board members. I'm going to turn this over to Trisha in a few seconds here, but before I did, Trisha's in the College and Career Academies Department. She's an expanded learning teacher. She's going to be sharing with you some exciting updates around our essential experiences, but I would like you to understand that Ms. Kelly is the linchpin on which this work revolves. She coordinates with transportation to make sure each and every student, their teachers and shamper rooms are safely on time, move from school to the experiences and back. She makes sure they all have a meal while on site. She makes sure all the related experience materials are ordered and delivered to classrooms. She communicates via multiple avenues to the schools and staff all the details of a successful experience. She works closely with each partner to continually refine all aspects of the curriculum with inquiry, representation, and exposure to careers. I often hear the partners have put their absolute trust in her to carry out the vision of our shared community partners within APS. In short, because Ms. Kelly will not self-promote, as she shares with you tonight this important update, I felt the need to make sure you knew how essential she is to the essential experiences. Thank you. Now, Ms. Kelly.
Well, I was not expecting that, so now I'm all nervous. Thank you, Marcy. Good evening, and thank you for the invitation to speak here this evening. It's my pleasure to talk about the recognition recently awarded to Akron Public Schools and the Essential Experiences Program. You may recall that early conversations about the Essential Experiences began in 2017. Dr. David James and the G.A.R. Foundation laid the groundwork for creating common learning experiences for all of our elementary scholars outside of the classroom. As ideas were shared and planning began, the elements listed here on this slide became the focus of what our Essential Experiences would look like. It would not matter what school a scholar attended, what zip code they lived in, or who their teacher was. They would all be included in these experiences. Each experience would rely on grade-level learning standards and an inquiry question to guide the experience, with pre- and post-visit activities included, to represent a more robust field studies program rather than a field trip. Relevant careers would be explored at all partner locations, and a scholar's connection to the Akron community would hopefully deepen. We believe that every child in Akron deserves to see Akron, and especially those places where they may not have an opportunity to visit otherwise, including cultural, historical, and outdoor nature locations. We are now in the fourth year of sending almost 10,000 students out and about to see the places that make Akron Akron. As I mentioned earlier, our main partner in this work is G.A.R. Foundation. The Foundation has committed over $3 million over a six-year period to bring these opportunities to our scholars. G.A.R. has aided APS in aligning and building relationships with community partners across seven grade levels. I'd also like to note that we work so closely with these community partners that they've become partners in our elementary summer camps as well. Our Essential Experiences partners are Art Sparks, the Akron Children's Museum, the Akron Zoo, the Cuyahoga Valley National Park, Hale Farm and Village, the Akron Art Museum, and Stan Hugh at Holland Gardens. With that in mind, earlier this fall, Marcy Ebright, our CCA director, shared information about the Magna Award. The Magna Award recognizes districts who display exemplary innovative programming and educational equity. They're sponsored by the National School Boards Association and their flagship magazine, The American School Board Journal. CCA then submitted a nomination for this award on behalf of APS and G.A.R. Foundation, which highlighted the Essential Experiences programming. The award criteria for the 2023 awards are as follows. Programming should solve or address a challenge in your school district. Programming is supported by district leaders who encourage creative solutions. Programming exhibits success over time, has demonstrated longevity, and can be replicated by other school districts with similar conditions and resources. Nominations were reviewed earlier this winter by an independent panel. School districts were categorized by enrollment into three different categories: those with students under, those with under 5,000 students, those between 5,000 and 20,000 students, and those districts that have over 20,000 students, which is where APS fell. In each enrollment category, there was one grand prize winner for a total of three, three silver awards for a total of nine, and several honorable mentions. APS was notified earlier this month that we were a silver award recipient for the 29th Annual Magna Awards. Our programming and all of the other award-winning programs will be highlighted in the April issue of The American School Board Journal. APS will also be recognized at the National School Board Association Conference in April. We appreciate the vision, the hard work, and the commitment it takes from everybody listed here on this slide. We are so grateful to our scholars, our teachers, and our principals for being excited about having these opportunities. We're thankful to our partners for welcoming our scholars and creating meaningful experiences in collaboration with our learning specialists. We're thankful to G.A.R. Foundation for their commitment to our scholars and our community. We're thankful to G A R Foundation for their commitment to our scholars and our community. We're so thankful to APS Transportation and Nutrition Staff, who work tirelessly to move and feed our children, all while being understaffed. And of course, we thank you, the superintendent and the Board of Education, including those members who started this work and those who continue to support it today. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you have any questions, Ms. Kelly can entertain them for you before she takes her seat. Just, let's see if there's any questions before you take your seat.
I just had a comment, I guess.
Sure.
So you said Akron was one of the, one of nine to get the silver medal?
Three in the highest enrollment category, three in the middle category, and three in the lowest.
We should say that louder. We got one of the silver, that's a pretty impressive thing.
We are an award-winning program! And I think with something Ms. Autry said earlier today, we need to be our biggest cheerleader, and we'll cheer today.
Comment, too?
Mr. Alexander?
Yeah, we should be tooting our horns on this here, because this is a national organization that's giving a national award. I've been on Q, which is part of, I was on Q for seven years, which is part of the National School Board Association, and we've always talked about pushing and making sure we get our kids and our, our, our programs there. We finally got it there, so that is something we should be really proud of. So I thank you guys for all the work, and this is what we talk about. We want to be, Ms. Autry always heard me say this here. I want to be the best school district in the country, United States, and that's how you get out there. Toot your horn, let people know the work that you're doing, and let people know they want to come and see what you're doing. That's how you become number one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes, I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank you and your team for all of the amazing work you do, as well as thank G A R for being a fantastic partner. One of the things I thought would be important is when we've gone to NSBA conferences and we see, I think it was the last one, I was sitting next to Bruce, I think, and they were naming off the awards, and we both said, "We need to have our name up there." And so, one of the things that I'm proud about is not only is our name up there, but it's for well-deserving work, not just what you put on paper, but what happens every day. And I don't think that we talk about that enough in the community. There has been some phenomenal things happening in this district, and we don't celebrate it and sing it to the rooftops enough. So congratulations for being award-winning, and all of the efforts that you're going to do. We're hoping that we can replicate some of that throughout the district in other places as well. So thank you for being a leader and pioneering that way.
It's my pleasure to work on this program. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
You know I had to say something, right? Because even, this is only my second year serving on the school board, and as, as you all know, every Wednesday I go to a school within my cluster. And I want to tell you, I've seen, it's exciting to see these such programs and to know that we're award-winning. And when you talk about tooting your horn, I just want to say, maybe, Pat, like, get teachers to take, because I've seen some great things in classrooms, teachers in classrooms, doing projects, having live things growing. I think, yeah, you know, Trina's amazing, but also, I went to Sam Salem, I think, my first year, and I, I'm sorry, can I remember the teacher, but I want to say she had, like, chickens, or like, yeah. Ms. Foot, Foot was great. Like, this is happening regularly. And so when we talk about what the district is doing, I want to just put out a clarion call to teachers who are making my saying excellence looks different, a true statement, to just maybe send these pictures of what's happening in your classroom to my email, so then we can show it up here, because it is happening not only on this macro level, when we talk about these programming and the funding, and we thank, we thank God for our funders, such as G A R, and people who support our district, but the micro level in the classroom, those teachers who make you feel excited about learning and are doing those project-based learning experiences, because they are here and the kids are excited about it, because as you see, I'm even excited remembering and talking about them. So thank you, guys, for all your work that you're doing to keep our children engaged, for supporting the programming, and just for everything, because excellence does look stiff, does look different, and it's looking like our, our district, and what our teachers are doing, and what our family's supporting, and what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Are there other, other comments? Okay, well, next we'll move to president's report.
Oh, just one moment.
Oh, please.
I have one more thing.
Okay, okay, got you.
Okay, so in my first sharing of what is happening across the district with our Be Kind 330 Initiative, can you guess which school I'm going to talk about? I am happy to highlight Be Kind 330 from my alma mater, Bookdo C L C. Bookdo High Chill Leaders, which are photo pictured here, embrace the Be Kind 330 Initiative by greeting all visiting cheer teams with warm Griff gestures, by taking team pictures and giving them candy bags before the varsity basketball games. Thank you to our chill leaders and coaches for spreading kindness inside and outside of our schools. This now concludes my report. Go Griff's!
Thank you, Ms. Ottley. Next, we'll proceed to the president's report. So first, let me begin by saying that, you know, these have been, we've had a tumultuous couple of weeks, and so I'd be remiss if I didn't first acknowledge that. It is during times like this, though, when you do learn, you know, just who is and who really, so just who really is supportive and of our district and our kids. And so, you know, I want to thank all of those who came tonight to address the board, you know, and obviously, they were clearly differing viewpoints on display. But I also want to make sure that I thank Pat Shipe and the Akron Teachers Union team that's still here. We certainly appreciate your support, you know, and I believe, you know, that as we move forward under this one band, one sound concept, right? It's my drum line reference, you know, one band, one sound, right? You know, you've got the school board, you've got administration, and you've got our largest constituent stakeholder, and that is our teachers, right? Those who take care of our kids, right? And nothing is possible for our students if we don't have teachers who are, who feel like they've been well cared for and taken care of and supported and heard. And so, so that's, so that's integral, and so as we continue to drive forward here in 2023 under this one band, one sound concept, you are going to see on display continued examples of collaboration between the school board, our administration led by Ms. Ottley, and the A A A team led by Ms. Shipe. That is, that is our collective commitment to this district and to this community. As a preview of that, we have a board retreat coming up here in just under two weeks, March 10th and 11th, and it may be the first retreat, well, I know it's the first retreat in recent memory, maybe the first retreat ever that is going to include an expanded version of, of what we traditionally do. So it'll be the, so it will be the board, it will be key members of senior staff, as well as the A A A leadership team, you know, all, all joining together in the course of a retreat, because that is how we move the district forward. One band, one sound. We will continue to invite those in the community that, that have partnered with us or seek to partner with us to come and sit with us at this table and talk with us about the things that they have done or aspire to do, the things they're currently dealing in, the things that they would like to do with this district. So as a quick preview, let me just share that, you know, Stan Hewitt and Scouts B S A are partners of ours, and so both of their executive leaders have, have already agreed to come and join us and, you know, provide a presentation where they talk about the things they have done, the things they are doing, and the things that they would like to do. So looking forward to seeing that on the board agenda in coming weeks. We also continue to extend our invitation to our partners like G A R and United Way to come and sit with us, you know, and be a part of having important dialogues and engaging in the work that's going to deepen our partnerships and also continue to move our, our district forward as well. We also continue to move forward with our treasurer search as well. We will begin moving forward with interviews on that, you know, here March 15th and again on April 6th. I know that we've gotten questions about that. We also, this board needs to choose an organization that will be our search form for our upcoming superintendent search as well, so we have a lot to do. We've also talked in the past about the focus this year being on academic achievement, and, and so we've teased this out on several times, but again, I'm also looking forward to seeing our high school campus principals come before this body and share, you know, you know, the goings-on in their schools, the things that are great, the things that maybe challenges opportunities, you know, and, and most importantly, I think, you know, sharing, you know, what they see as being their needs for resources and perhaps assistance, you know, from, from this body. So we're looking forward to that as well, in, coming forward, beginning in the, in the coming weeks. So, but again, you know, just in closing, let me just say again, you know, that these are tumultuous and polarizing times, and it is just, it's, it's in these exact times when we have to pull together, you know, to do what's best for our kids, our teachers, our families, and all of you who are in this room. You know, that collectively is the true north on our, on our compass. So that concludes the president's report. Are there any questions? Okay, next, we'll move to the treasurer's report. Mr. Atkins?
No report.
Okay, next, we'll move to committee reports. Legal, finance, I'm sorry, legal, policy, and contracts.
Yes, hello. We don't have an extensive report. Just wanted to say that our next meeting is, the meeting is after our next board meeting on March 20th at 5:45 PM, so look forward to having that discussion to finalize what we believe our priorities will be for the year for around policy, and then moving forward, working with the superintendent and the treasurer to move those items forward, and hopefully through the process before the end of the year. With that being said, that is the legal contracts and board policy report.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar. Any questions? Okay, next, we move to the finance committee.
No report. We will be convening on March 20th for our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Autry. Next, we'll move to instructional policy.
No report.
No report, okay. And finally, we'll move to the equity committee.
So, we met last week, and we had a great meeting. This is my first year, my first meeting, actually, on the equity committee. I'm excited about the work that we're going to do in the coming months. A few things we talked about, some areas of focus that we looked at were our environment, which includes our climate and culture, the instruction, which is how we teach, the curriculum, which is what we teach. We talked about all that, and also professional development and support. And I was most excited about a list that we received of some survey responses that were given out, asking questions like, "How can we address climate and culture in our classroom?" And what does culturally responsive instruction look like in practice? And some of those phrases that kind of got me and that stuck with me were using words like reflective of diversity, welcoming to all, modifying instruction to meet individual needs, embracing difference. And those are very important concepts, I believe, in what we're seeking to do as a committee and trying to further our, our, you know, equity in our Akron Public Schools. We also got a list of things, traditional leadership approach, and talking about being an equitable leader in our schools, and the emergent equity leadership approach is what we're looking to do now, which includes things like situational awareness, relationship building, and direction setting. So I'm really excited about this committee this year, looking forward to our coming meetings. There's one other event that we discussed coming up this week, which is the New and Existing Employees United Networking and Information Social on Thursday, March 2nd, right downtown here in room 205 and 206. It's going to be from 3:30 until 5:30 PM. It's a great chance to get out, to network with other staff that employed by EPS for less than three years, from one to three years, it looks like, and it looks like it's going to be a great program. Looking forward to going to that myself, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Okay, that's it, all right. I don't see any unfinished business. Is there any new business? Okay, I see no new business. Okay, at this point, we are going to, I need a motion to recess into executive session pursuant to Highway 121.22G1 for the purpose of considering the employment of a public employee or official of the school district in G4 for the purpose of reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning compensation or other terms and conditions of employment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. McKittrick. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Atkins.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
The motion carries. We stand in recess at 7:19.
I just saw it today. I read a little bit of it.